My opinion piece for the October 26th Board of Supervisors meeting. Quite a bit late on this because of all the things that have gone on at the end of October and early November. So first I want to start out with saying some general things about our Board of Supervisors. We currently have a Board of Supervisors that depends on the public having a short memory and a short attention span. There are very, very few people in our community that pay any attention to what this group of people are doing, and they're doing a very, very bad job for us, wasting millions of dollars and doing things to attempt to separate us from them. And they don't want any of our interference. They don't want any feedback from us. They just want to do what they have on their agenda. And they do issue an agenda for every meeting. For a long time, they would not put anything under the agenda items, so they would give us a moment to comment on them at the beginning of the meeting, typically three minutes a person, but no substance underneath the agenda, so we didn't have an idea of what was going to be discussed. So they started putting information under the agenda item. This lasted for a couple of months, and now they're back to their old ways without giving us the information and expecting us to make comments during the public meeting with zero information. So they're back to that. The new board members at the beginning of the year talked about transparency. Well, there's nothing like that. There is no transparency. In fact, it's getting worse. They've built a wall between the public and themselves, and their general attitude and demeanor towards those of us that criticize them is apparent. You can see it in the videos. You can see it in their behavior. They even attack one another. So they're rather incompetent and childish in a lot of ways. No professionalism on this board whatsoever, and yet they're responsible for over $70 million of taxpayer funds. I don't know what we're going to do about this, but I can tell you that the corruption is systemic. It's long-term. It's very deep. It's been going on since Lisa Vander Leyen took control of the board along with John Granger. And the current, I call it the boys' club, are the four amigos. I mean, it's important to recognize some of the things that they have done, and it's obvious. I've exposed much of it, like a supervisor who was chairman of the board who hasn't paid the pro capita tax for over 10 years in her household, her and her significant other. They've never paid the pro capita tax, while I'm sure you and I have. Another former board member who has had driveway parking spaces paved on the township's dime in his front yard so his wife can have parking spaces for her beauty business. These were all benefits while they were supervisors. We have a current sitting supervisor who created a private foundation and received $9,000 donations from our Reifton Fire Company and never disclosed any of that information. Our current chairman of the board, he walks out his back door, drops a couple golf balls down into the driving range, and just starts playing golf on his private golf course that he controls. We have a new supervisor who has been using the township assets for his private indulgence with his nonprofits and his other endeavors. We'll talk about some of that a little bit later, but it's a continuation of the corruption, and we need to stop it. And I'm calling them all out. You need to call them out. You need to get involved. So now to talk about a couple of issues on October 26th Board of Supervisors meeting. There's a lot of things I could discuss, but I want to keep it brief. One of the unfinished business items was presented by Jennifer Savage. She's the finance director, totally out of her element. She doesn't have the experience to be a finance director, yet she's making big bucks. You'll hear more about her in the future because she's been a very, very naughty girl. But on this particular subject, on this particular meeting, she delivered some information on an update for the sewer delinquencies. They reported earlier, prior meetings, that we have $1.7 million in delinquencies that need to be collected. This was a shock to me, as I'm sure it was for a lot of people. Who knew? You know, to kind of give a measurement of what that is, the last year we owned a sewer plant, for three quarters of the year, we had a little bit over $5 million in revenue. So $1.7 million in outstanding receivables was about 26% of the revenue for the last year we owned the sewer plant. Now, these revenues didn't happen in that one year. They happened over a number of years, but we do know that it certainly looks very bad for our political entity. I mean, these guys were not busy collecting debt owed to us, and now all of a sudden they're trying to, you know, do it because it became very apparent without the sewer plant, they still had all these collectibles. It's negligence, and it's a lack of management at the very core of our administration. It's just not there. The other item I'd like to talk about is they approved a motion to spend $100,000 on a master plan, and they gave the contract to Simone Collins. Don't be surprised about that. John Granger's associate. They've been sucking money out of the taxpayer here now since Granger arrived. What are we buying for $100,000? They're going to develop a plan. They're going to take an area of Daniel Boone Homestead and devise walking trails, hiking trails, and trails for horse riding. Okay? $100,000? And the worst part of this is that $50,000 is a direct contribution of our taxpayer money. $50,000 is a grant. So sometimes it's not always wise to use a grant, but this is more for the benefit of Simone Collins. We're basically giving them a $100,000 gift, $50,000 directly from us taxpayers in Exeter. But this is a plan that may never be implemented. It's just, it's like you buy a toy that you always wanted, but you get it and you never use it. This plan may never be implemented. Most likely, it won't be, but Simone Collins will get $100,000. It's just ridiculous. I mean, I listened to this conversation. If you listen to it, you got the four boys' club talking about how great it is. This is good. John Crusades says that Simone Collins is the most qualified. Of course, he's going to say that, but none of them provide any information to substantiate their beliefs, and this is pretty much the way they operate all the time. We also, you know, during October, we had a non-permitted car show appear all of a sudden at the promenade. It's not just the car show that all of a sudden sprung up, and none of the supervisors or the manager, they claim they knew nothing about it, yet they know about everything else that's going on in the township. Somehow it eluded them, even the police department. So, you know, what's going on here? We've uncovered some people that have told us that it was approved. They got the okay from a supervisor. So we're following up on those leads. But this promenade has been used for nonprofits, two different nonprofits that I know of, for a high school graduation from a local high school, and now for these car shows, and who knows what else it's been used for, all on the taxpayers' dime. Now, some of these things are very, very good things for our community, and I'm not criticizing the people who held these events. My criticism is directed at the supervisors and a temporary township manager, Mr. Ham, Mr. Gaultier. These guys are using this facility, and the Board of Supervisors are not recording any of this activity in our records, and they're required as supervisors to make sure that all the business of the township is recorded. And like I said, it's not those other entities that I'm concerned about. It's the supervisors' behavior. They could have waived all the permits for these events, and who could say anything? But what they should not have waived was a requirement for proof of liability insurance from all of these entities, all of them, to protect the township and to protect our assets. They should have required a refundable deposit so that after the events, and we inspected everything, and everything was cleaned up, and there were no damages to anyone, then the refund, the deposit would be refunded. This is the minimum of what the supervisors should have done, but they did not do these things to protect us. So they're negligent, terribly negligent, perhaps even bordering and maybe exceeding You know, then I want to talk about new business, Joe Staub and his idea of paying down some of the debt during the refi... First of all, I'm not sure that the refinancing is necessary, but they're going to go ahead and do it anyway. And Joe wants to spend, pay down over $2 million of the debt, which is a foolish idea. Now, Joe might be the only one on the board that has any experience in finance, but he's a mortgage broker. You know, that's all he is. I spent years in the corporate world in treasury, managing the corporation's money for the benefit of the corporation and to get the biggest bang out of our buck. And to pay off a mortgage, to pay down a mortgage for our township is very poor use of our funds. I mean, it's very simple. Most people understand the concept of the time value of money. So if we have a dollar today, it's worth more than a dollar a week from now, or even a day from now. Everybody understands that, because you earn interest on that dollar, you have it now. A dollar today is better than having a dollar tomorrow. So why are we going to spend $2 million to pay down debt that we took out years ago that we are paying off in cheaper and cheaper dollars? Right? Cheaper dollars. We should be keeping that $2 million-plus dollars in our bank account. But this is the poor decision-making of Joe and the rest of the supervisors, just like you'll see now in the recently released 2019 audit, where we've overfunded the police pension fund and another pension fund for the employees by over 40%. Who in the world would overfund a pension fund by that much? So it's overfunded. The two funds together are overfunded by $10 million. That could have been in our bank account, earning interest for us, but now is in control by someone else, and we'll talk about that in a future video. Very, very poor decision-making, very, very terrible understanding of money management, and none of them have any experience in that. But they'll never listen to someone who does because they know everything. So I'm going to move on and talk some more about the miscues of this township and of the boards. In 2015, they adopted the 2016 budget, and I'm going to show you some information where it's absolutely amazing what this board did. They passed a motion earlier at this meeting in 2015 to not raise township taxes. And then in the same meeting, they adopted a budget that raised township taxes in 2016 by 13.2%. That's right. Consider the ridiculous logic that I just told you. They passed a motion not to raise taxes, and then they went ahead and approved a budget that raised taxes. Now, I'm not making this up, and these guys, they try to say things that, making it look like I'm not telling you the truth, but everything I present you has facts behind it. And there's a newspaper article written in 2015 that talks about this, and I will be putting part of that up as a display in this video later on. So we go on, 2016, by the way. The budget was $10.3 million. The next year, it went to $10.8 million, a 5% increase. Now, remember, Crusades is always mouthing off, they don't raise taxes, they don't raise taxes. Well, of course, we know in 2016, the year that he was put on the board, they did raise taxes 13.2%. But if they didn't raise taxes from that point on until now, how do they get, where do they get the money to spend? Because in 2017, the budget increased 5% to $10.8 million. In 2018, it increased to $11.5 million. That's a 6% increase. In 2019, it went up to $12.6 million, a 9.6% increase. And then finally here, we're looking at 2020, it went to $12.7 million, a 1% increase. So in that whole four-year period, the increase from $10.8 million to $12.7 million to 2020, $1.9 million increase in operating expenses with no tax increases? So where do they get the money to pay that? Not only this, but those four years, and I think probably five years if you count 2016, they always ended up spending more than they brought in the general fund. So how do they explain that? It doesn't make sense to me, but they stole from Peter to pay Paul. And some of the ways they did that was they worked down the reserves. They delayed maintenance on our main facility where the police and administration is. That's in dire need of a lot of work. They completely neglected the Redding Country Club building. That thing is in very, very poor condition. So all of these things were neglected for four or five years just so that they could sit there and say, we didn't raise taxes on you. And that's not the reason why they're there. They're there to maintain our township and to maintain our assets, but they failed miserably to do that. So these are the things that I think you need to know about, that we should be watching and criticizing our township supervisors, although they put up an invisible wall so that we can't contact them, and if we do, as I've alluded to earlier in this conversation, they treat us very badly. Their attitude towards us is just absolutely horrible, and with the exception of Michelle Kircher, every single one of them deserves to be thrown out of office. And that's another issue that we'll have to deal with. But they're incompetent. They're not concerned about the township, and they've got their own agenda. It's even in the audited report of 2019 where they talk about continuing this master plan that was created with John Granger and Lisa Vander Leyen, and they continue to try to make that plan work when everyone knows now COVID-19 is changing the world. That plan no longer makes any sense. It's totally irrelevant now, but they're moving forward because they can't think on their own. They can only use what's been designed by these greedy people that were in office before, and they still got their hands in the pie. You can count on it. But there's no creativity in our township, and the focus is only on how much money they can get out of the taxpayers. We have the largest employment down there in the history of Exeter Township, the biggest salaries that we've ever had before, and they do less work. When you look at the 2019 audit, you're going to just shake your head and say, what in the world is going on here? But for now, this opinion was for October 26th, 2020 Board of Supervisors meeting. I hope that you'll enjoy my observations and my opinions on this meeting, and keep in mind that corruption never sleeps, and they're working on it every single day and night. Thanks for listening. This is an article that was in the 2015 Reading Eagle. So it's quite a few years ago, but it talks about what they did concerning the 2016 budget. Now, Lisa Vander Leyen was on the board. Soon to arrive after this article would be John Crusades, who came on the board in 2016. But you can Google this article and read the whole article. I also have some links on it on Nextdoor, and I will also put it on Exeter United. But as you'll see in the next slide, because I take some of the information from this article to show you the ridiculous hypocrisy and inept management of our township. So after a long contentious debate, Exeter approves a tentative tax hike. And what you'll read in the next slide is that, I mean, I don't know what they're thinking. You take from it what you will, but the Reading Eagle reported that they passed a motion not to raise taxes. And then, right after they passed that motion, they approved the 2016 budget, which raised taxes 13.2%. So what I'm trying to show you here is, once again, an example of how the Board of Supervisors misleads the public time after time. They prey on the fact that we have short attention spans and short memories of what they're doing, and they take advantage of that, and no one's holding their feet to the fire. They have a lot of responsibility, a lot of power, but zero accountability. So I hope you'll Google this article and read the extent of it and see the poor management that we have in our township. This slide is a follow-up, showing you this article and a little excerpt from that article. And as you can see, the cutout below the picture, following four hours of debate, the township supervisors voted 3 to 2 to approve a tentative $10.3 million budget that raises taxes 13.2%. But the most alarming issue is this one. Look at this. The vote on a 2016 spending plan contradicted a motion the supervisors passed earlier in the night to not raise taxes. Now, does this make any sense to you? I think it's indicative of how poorly managed our township is and how they treat the taxpayer as, like we're idiots. Who in their right mind would pass a motion not to raise taxes and then immediately afterwards raise taxes 13.2%? You know, that's like they're giving us the proverbial finger, right? So this is how bad it is, and you can see in 2016, the budget was going to be $10.3 million. Today, four years later, that budget is now over $12 million. And you should also know that in these intervening years, from 2016 to 2020, we will be spending in a deficit. In other words, the money that they budgeted and expected in revenue is, the spending is going to exceed our budgets, and they have every year. 2016, 17, 18, and 19, we had deficits. Where did this money come from? Because you'll hear John Granger constantly involved in this, and you'll hear John Crusades constantly say, no tax increases. Where did the money come from? Well, they borrowed it from Peter to pay Paul, and then they sold our sewer plant to cover up all their misdeeds. But if you look at what's going on with our facility where the police and administration is, and if you look at our Redding Country Club building, they deferred maintenance to the tune of, you know, millions of dollars. So what is it that they're trying to achieve as they segregate the public from their operations, refusing to discuss issues with us other than when they feel like answering a question, and then giving us false information constantly? Everything I tell you, everything I show you, I will have documents to support it. And they'll come back and say, what I say isn't true, but they will not provide any documents to overrule what I'm telling you. So start educating yourself about what's going on in your community, because if you don't, it's going to cost you hundreds and, or maybe perhaps even thousands of dollars if you live in some of these new homes, because I'm telling you, they're spending all of our money, and taxes are going to go through the roof.
Good to go.
Thanks, Laura. I'd like to call to order the Monday, October 26th, 2020 meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
For which this stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible.
With liberty.
And justice.
For all.
Thank you. We'll call Mr. Gaultier.
Here.
Mr. Staub.
Here.
Ms. Kircher.
Hi.
Mr. Crusades.
Here.
And Mr. Spees, I'm here. Public comments on agenda items.
We have three of them. The first one is from David Hughes.
This is David Hughes from 47th Street. I would like to comment about a couple of items on the agenda. Unfortunately, I only got three minutes, but the first one is related to the warning essential contract for Daniel Boone Master Plan. Does anyone in the township even know what the Daniel Boone Master Plan is? If it's on that website that we have, it's difficult to find anything on it. But my main questions really have to do with, I see that you only get two RFPs were submitted, and you want to approve of a grant that we're going to get. Usually, grants require additional funds from the township, and in a COVID-19 era and the lack of funds, that must mean you're drawing them from the sewer plant. And my main concern also is Simone Collins, I believe, will probably be one of those RFPs, and my guess is you will pick them. Now, they're associated with John Granger. They're also... And in the COVID-19 era and the lack of funds, that must mean you're drawing them from the sewer plant. And my main concern also is Simone Collins, I believe, will probably be one of those RFPs. And my guess is you will pick them. Now, they're associated with John Granger. They're also associated with KCBA. And the idea of electing Michelle Kircher, Joe Saab, and Greg Gaultier was that we would start shedding all the opportunities that we had working with John Granger. So if we see any of those three voting to keep Simone Collins, it's my opinion that we know that they've turned against the voters. And that should be something that we want to remember going forward. So I'm opposed to Simone Collins taking this master plan for Daniel Boone Homestead. And I don't, frankly, I don't even know what the master plan is, because you don't give us enough information, including all the other items, in addition to the master plan issue, all the other agenda items. You sparsely give us an idea of it, but not enough to form an opinion or to make a comment. You're going back to your old ways of not giving us enough information. Why couldn't we know who the two RFP submissions were? It's very simple. You could have put them on there, but you did not do it. You know, who are you awarding the Moe contract to? That could have been put on there so we know who it is. And how about these appointments of positions for the Assistant Public Works Superintendent and Code Enforcement Officer? You could have put their names on there. You could have explained what these two positions are and why they are being appointed. Are they new positions? Are they old positions that required someone to fill them? You've isolated the community. You have built an invisible wall between our political system and the people that live in this township. And I hope that we can do something about making you pay for that, for doing that. It's obvious. It's clear.
Is that it?
Yes, the system automatically cuts off at a certain point. That was 3 minutes and 20 seconds, and the voicemail system cuts out.
Okay, and there was no follow-up?
No, but I...
But yeah, Laurie, if you want to, yeah, if you want to touch on whatever part, it's mostly the agenda, I guess.
Yeah, absolutely. So I can comment on the Daniel Boone Master Plan to start. We've talked about that at several meetings. I'm sure the board recalls that you had to give me permission to submit the, to do the grant application and then to do the RFP. So the RFP was put out back in July, and the submissions were due, and we reviewed them, and they were provided to the board for review. So we're just looking at this point for a decision to be made on those. Unfortunately, only two were submitted. We were hoping for a lot more, but we can't control who puts in proposals. We had a lot of interest initially in the process. We had somewhere, I think it was about 15 or so, that expressed interest and got on the list and requested the RFP. But when it came time to submit the actual proposal, unfortunately, we did only get two. So the other thing I would like to do, there is a lot of information on the Daniel Boone Master Plan out there. Again, we've talked about it a fair amount at public meetings. There's also a whole page on our website dedicated to it, and I'm just going to go ahead and show that, because it's actually pretty easy to find. So if, on the Government tab here, Current Projects, there's a whole page on Daniel Boone Homestead. So the project goals are on there. The timeline of how the project has run is on there. There's actually recordings of the pre-proposal meeting that we held via Zoom with those who had requested an invite to it that were considering putting in a proposal. So there is information out there, so I just wanted to point that out. Yes, we do have to match the funds. We've talked about that before as well, and in my budget presentation last time. The matching funds are not coming from the wastewater sewer proceeds. They're coming from the Park Fund. It's a 50-50 match. It's a $50,000 grant. We're putting $50,000 as matching funds up for that, and that is budgeted for. It was budgeted for in the prior year as well. That's about it for the Daniel Boone Master Plan, unless anybody has any questions on that.
No. I don't know if anyone else has any comments on anything else. I mean, I think selecting vendors like Simone Collins or anyone else, we don't exclude. We try to look at the best one and move from there. But comments from anyone, or we move on?
Move on.
All right.
All right, the next comment is from, hopefully I don't mispronounce this last name, but Gary Garaya.
Since the service electric cable system is already in place, the length of the contract be reduced to three years at a time and not 10 years. The cable bill must be a basket average of neighboring counties in our TWP. Currently, it is 75% more than Lehigh Valley, which is ridiculous. Cannot be a standalone rate above the rest. Create a basket of neighboring county bills and see that it is permanently related to that, so no one will have hard feelings. Just because Exeter TWP gets a 5% cut over the top does not mean the rates will be go over the top unrelated to the basket. The TWP should not appear to be or be hand in glove of the cable company, which appears to be the case now.
Um, well, Jeff, you could probably pop this one off pretty quickly.
Yes, at the last meeting, we discussed the whole cable franchise agreement and the information we had put out to the public. Tonight, the board is scheduled to vote to finalize this as part of an ordinance. The misinformation that's been going on out there is that, for some reason, people believe the township has the ability to set the rates. We have absolutely nothing to do with the rates that are charged by the cable company. That's a private business decision. Comparing the Berks County area to Lehigh Valley area, you can do that, but it has no bearing on this agreement. This agreement is simply the ability for a company to pay for the use of the right-of-way in a township for their cable. That's all that this simply is. The question of having only a 10-year or a 3-year agreement versus 10. 10 is the standard minimum that most people have with these cable agreements. Many of them go as far as 20 years. Having it every three years would be very redundant, kind of a waste of time, going through the same process over and over again. The law's effectiveness are very limited. They're not going to change all that much. If they do change during the course of the contract, we'd have the ability to go back and reopen the contract if federal law was changed on how much money can be reimbursed. So there was a lot of misinformation out there. I think we explained it all last week, and tonight, we're just trying to complete the process and get the ordinance approved.
Thanks, Jeff. Great. All right, Laurie?
Okay, my third comment, and the last one for agenda items is from John Carmelo.
Appointment of Positions. Assistant Public Works Superintendent. A, is this a new or existing position? B, what are the duties of this position? C, why do we need this position?
Is that it?
Yep, that's it.
Jeff, I mean, you're going to explain that when we get there.
I'm going to explain that later on in the agenda. It's up for board approval. Both of these are existing positions that were being filled internally with the staff, but I'll explain that in more detail when we bring that up under Item 5 of New Business.
Great, thanks. Announcements. Is that...
I can cover this if you'd like. Just thought it would be a good idea to mention, with General Election Day coming up on November 3rd, there's been some changes to polling places in Exeter. So I just wanted to point out that it would be a good idea for people to double-check that they know where they're voting on Tuesday on Election Day. And I can actually share, we did update the information on the website, so I'll share that as well here. The county elections office had some trouble this time around finding places, polling places. They can't get into schools because schools are still closed and that sort of thing. So there's some information on the website. People can go right on there and plug their address in to check where their polling place is. If you click on the first link, I updated all of the polling places on our election page, so people can easily find where they need to vote. Or they can call us, and we can look it up for them if people aren't sure. So just wanted to point that out, because there were a fair number of changes to the 11 polling places in Exeter.
Great, thanks, Laurie. Presentations. Moving on to the Police Sergeant Promotion Ceremony. And Chief, I think you're going to lead us here.
Yes, sir. So I had the privilege today to promote two sergeants, Sergeant Gregory Davis and Sergeant Rocco DiCamillo. They're being promoted to fill vacancies due to retirements. We had a promotion ceremony and oath of office swearing in at DJ Fegley's office earlier today. Normally, I'd like to hold these sort of events at board meetings, but because of COVID, we decided that we would have it over at the DJ's office, film it, and then the residents could have an opportunity to view it here today. I'd like to give you a little quick bio about our two new sergeants, and we'll get started with Sergeant Gregory Davis. He graduated from the Delaware County Police Academy in December of 1995, prior to joining the Exeter Township Police Department in March of 1999. Sergeant Davis worked for the Upper Porkeonan Police Department and the Schuylkill Township Police Departments in full officer capacity. Sergeant Davis has held the following positions in the Exeter Township Police Department: Patrolman, Detective, Dare Officer, and Waymaster. He's also currently cross-sworn as a Berks County Detective. Sergeant Davis earned his bachelor's degree in Criminal Justice from Westchester University. In his youth, he also earned the rank of Eagle Scout through the Boy Scouts of America. Sergeant Davis is married and has four children. Sergeant Rocco DiCamillo began his career in law enforcement in 1994. He worked for the Borough of Phoenixville Police Department before joining the Exeter Township Police Department in December of 1997. Rocco currently serves in the patrol unit, and his other duties include Field Training Officer and Firearms Instructor. He's previously been detached to the Berks County Drug Task Force and is currently cross-sworn as a Berks County Detective. He has served as a dare instructor and as a liaison for the Community Youth Aid Panel. Sergeant DiCamillo is a sergeant major in the Marine Corps Reserve. He has served for over 25 years. He's completed three combat tours to Iraq and Afghanistan and was awarded the Bronze Star and other service medals. Sergeant DiCamillo has an Associate of Applied Science degree for Law Enforcement Administration. He is married and has two sons. So we had that promotion ceremony earlier, and hopefully, we can get it working here. Laurie, if you could cue that up.
Is it okay?
Yep. Yes.
As we gather to promote Sergeant Gregory Davis and Sergeant Rocco DiCamillo, more achievement to get promoted to Sergeant. Both of you worked extremely hard to get to this point in your career. I congratulate you both. Your knowledge, skills, and leadership will be relied upon by the command staff and me. As we hire more officers, I would be looking at the both of you to mentor the new hires and set the standard of excellence to be followed. Thank you.
I am Gregory Davis.
I, Sergeant Gregory Davis.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And that I will discharge the duties.
Of my office with my fidelity.
Of my office with my fidelity.
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
To the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Exeter Township.
Exeter Township.
Berks County and its citizens.
Berks County and its citizens.
I will perform all my duties.
I will perform all my duties.
As a police officer in Exeter Township.
As a police officer in Exeter Township.
Berks County.
Berks County.
Honestly.
Honestly.
Faithfully.
Faithfully.
And in accordance with the law.
And in accordance with the law.
And I will obey the orders of my superior officers.
And I will obey the orders of my superior officers.
And conduct myself at all times.
And conduct myself at all times.
In accordance with the regulations.
In accordance with the regulations.
Established by the Exeter Township Police Department.
Established by the Exeter Township Police Department.
Congratulations, Sergeant. I, Sergeant Rocco DiCamillo.
I, Sergeant Rocco DiCamillo.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge those duties.
And I will discharge those duties.
Of my office with my fidelity.
Of my office with my fidelity.
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
To the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Exeter Township, Berks County, and its citizens.
Exeter Township, Berks County, and its citizens.
I will perform all my duties.
I will perform all my duties.
As a police officer in Exeter Township.
As a police officer in Exeter Township.
Berks County.
Berks County.
Honestly.
Honestly.
Faithfully.
Faithfully.
And in accordance with the law.
And in accordance with the law.
And I will obey the orders of my superior officers.
And I will obey the...
Orders of my superior officers. And conduct myself at all times.
And conduct myself at all times.
In accordance with the regulations.
In accordance with the regulations.
Established by the Exeter Township Police Department.
Established by the Exeter Township Police Department.
Congratulations, Sergeant.
Let's go, Gregory. Either one of you guys like to say any words? We'll start with Sergeant Davis first.
You all know I've been here for 22 years. I am very fortunate to have worked 22 years for Exeter Township. I'm looking forward to the new capacity of being sergeant. I'm looking forward to having a positive impact on all the guys, providing the guidance that they need so we can keep the professional level of service that we've been providing for Exeter Township for past years and for many years to come. Thanks for all your support. Appreciate it. First off, thanks for the trust and confidence you put in us to do this today. I appreciate it. And for all the officers, thanks for coming out here. It means a lot to both of us. You know, we worked really hard studying for that exam and going through the process. And I just look forward to serving all of you, the men and women of this department, here in the future. I still feel I have a lot of gas left in my tank, and I'm going to miss being a field training officer and training the new guys. I look forward to seeing those officers step up and train the new new guys that we haven't even hired yet. So I look forward to the future of the Exeter Township Police Department, and I'll lay down a role in it. Thank you.
All right, gentlemen, you guys have the floor. It's your special night. Again, I just want to say I couldn't be more happy with the selections that we have. I think we'll have two fine sergeants, and I'm sure they'll serve the citizens of the township for many years to come. I look forward to working with them, and I can't be more pleased with who we have filling those roles. Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent. Sergeant Davis, Sergeant DiCamillo, any words?
I'm just very fortunate to have the opportunity to provide, you know, 24 years of my experience and help groom the new officers that are going to be coming in within the next 10 to 14 years to help provide, you know, the proper leadership they need and supervision so they can excel and be able to replace both... Correction, Sergeant DiCamillo and I when we're ready to retire.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to the board for inviting us to this meeting tonight. You know, it's just another one of those small sacrifices with the COVID-19 pandemic that we have to do it this way. But this was a special ceremony today for my family and I and for the officers that attended. I appreciate all who attended. And Chief, thank you again for the trust and confidence that you have placed in myself and Sergeant Davis today. And thank you to the men and women that I've worked with over, you know, the past 25 years in law enforcement. No one attains these positions alone. I look forward to serving with new officers in the future on new platoons. And this promotion, it also brought me to the decision to retire from the Marine Corps Reserve after... And this promotion, it also brought me to the decision to retire from the Marine Corps Reserve after it'll be 29 years. So I'll retire effective 1 November 2021. So I look forward to new beginnings here at the Police Department. Thank you.
Congratulations, guys.
Congratulations and thank you.
Congratulations. Good luck. Thanks.
Alrighty.
That's all I have. I don't know if you guys want to stay on to the, you guys can sign off and enjoy the rest of the time with your family. It's your special night and thank you for attending the meeting.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Congrats.
All right, we move on to regular approvals, minutes of the October 12, 2020 meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular minutes for the October 12, 2020 Board of Supervisors meeting.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Minutes of the special budget meeting, October 19, 2020. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the special budget meeting, October 19, 2020.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Disbursements, October 26, 2020.
I move that we approve the disbursements for October 26, 2020 as submitted.
I'll second.
Any further comments? I think, Jen, you had some inquiries that you're gonna cover.
I do. Getting through my emails here. All right, we had an invoice for $1,820 to Blue Line K9. This is the quarterly invoice that we pay for our K9 training for our three, four, now three K9 dogs. There was a $2,105 invoice that was paid through Commerce Bank, which is the corporate credit cards that we use for ballroom carpets. This is the replacement of the Redding Country Club carpeting by Martin's Flooring. We had to pay a 50% deposit, so the total bill for that is $4,210.81. I believe this has to do with the water intrusion that we had a couple of weeks ago. We had discussed the cleaning of the carpet at the last meeting. This was the replacement of some of the carpeting and the underlayment of the carpeting. We had legal bills payable to Hartman Valeriano in this check run. This is for the September invoice. So there was some employment issues for $297. We had some Promenade tenant issues for $611. Teamsters contract negotiation for $1,172. A tax appeal of some properties in the township for $231. Work on the sewer accounts receivable collection process, which was $1,417. A general labor question for $50, some general legal matters for $4,737. I believe included in there was some right to know information. Bond refinance, $248. Road dedication filing information for $660. And two land development escrows, one for Mama's Pizza, the bill was $99, and one for Ten Santa Maria, $408. Those last two actually come out of the escrow funds that are proposed by those actual entities. We have a rent overpayment payable to Regis Corporation for $3,793. They're the parent company for Holiday Hair, who is a tenant at the Promenade. They actually overpaid their Promenade rent. They paid us an extra month or two, not quite sure why. So they have vacated the premises as of October of 2020 and we returned the extra funds. And we had one last question, which is for the power DMS invoice for $3,690. This is annual maintenance for one of the police softwares that the police officers use.
Thanks, Jen.
Excellent. Thanks, Jen. Go, Joe.
Yep, just saying thank you.
Okay.
Answer my questions.
Great, that covers most of them. Any other comments from anyone on disbursements or questions? Very good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm subject to audit. I approve him.
Subject to audit.
That's actually the treasurer's report that's subject to audit, not the disbursements.
Yeah.
Okay.
Very good. Treasurer's report, September 2020.
I move that we approve the treasurer's report for September 2020 as submitted. Subject to audit.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Unfinished business, updated report on delinquent sewer collection efforts.
All right, Dave, I'm gonna be handling this tonight.
Okay, thanks, Jen.
So we talked, I'm gonna say a month ago, about the future process of how we're gonna collect the accounts receivable balance from the, after the sale of the sewer plant. And you guys gave some excellent feedback and instructions, so we've been taking that and kind of moving forward. I don't have a whole lot to update on. Of course, everything in government moves very slowly. So we are still working through the process. But I do have some information to report here and I can, I'm thinking we should continue to do this on a monthly or maybe bimonthly basis as we, you know, work our way through the collection process. So the number of delinquent accounts that we started with back in January was 1,544. As of the end of September, we're down to 697 delinquent accounts. So I thought that was fantastic progress. Over that time period from January to September, we've collected almost $500,000. The accounts receivable balance is down to just under $1,007,000. We've been sending monthly reminder notifications to people, which are prompting some payments. Some people are making regular payments. Some people are paying off, you know, some small balances that were left at the end of the billing cycle. I've been working with Hartman Valeriano, George Lutz, at that office, at our solicitor's office, on the large commercial account, which I had mentioned before, which owes us in excess of $100,000. They have actually agreed to, I believe just as of earlier today, to pay us an initial payment of $10,000. I believe it's coming in this week and then they will pay us $5,000 a month thereafter. That is for a one-year period of time and basically at the end of one year, we will renegotiate what is left of the balance for a future payment plan. So that is great news to try and get that very large balance paid down. We've also been working with Liz's office, with Hartman Valeriano, on the top 13, I believe it is, accounts that we have. Those are the accounts that have balances over $10,000. So as you can imagine, these folks have not paid their bill in a significant period of time and these are kind of what I call the messy accounts. These are the accounts that have bankruptcies and different things associated with them. So we've been working very closely with George Lutz at Hartman Valeriano to get these kind of very clean and scrubbed before we start sending out demand letters, as we had discussed to these folks. If we start sending demand letters while there, if there's a bankruptcy, an active bankruptcy, we could be in violation of that. So we're just trying to make sure we have all of our Ps and Qs in order before we send that final demand letter. But those demand letters should be going out in November, once we have everything scrubbed. And then we will continue after that with the next largest balances. So we're gonna work from, you know, the greatest to the smallest balances with these demand letters. Last thing is, we've been working on, Jen Kaufman's working very hard on a collection policy so that when we do talk to residents after we send demand letters out and requesting for them to set up a payment plan so that we're all on the same page of what we can and cannot offer people for payment plans. We are putting in there that if a person sets up a payment plan and abides by that payment plan, there will be no future penalties assessed as long as they're making regularly scheduled payments. We're hopeful to have everyone set up on a payment plan, which is paying off their balance in less than three years. I think that's the marker that we're going to establish. And also that if they do miss a payment, the payment plan would be voided and we would proceed with the civil action that we had discussed before. That is really my update. If anybody has any questions? If not, I'll probably come back at the end of November and give an update as to where we are.
Thank you.
That was excellent, Jen.
That was.
One question I have is, so this revenue that we're taking in here, this flows back into the general fund?
It does. It actually flows through what we're calling the reserve fund right now, which is the old sewer fund. So really, I did that for ease because all of our systems are integrated into that fund and, you know, the online payment systems flow into that fund. So we accumulate all that revenue in and then as necessary, we've been making transfers from the sewer fund into the general fund to support the general fund.
Great, thanks.
Thanks, Jen.
Any other questions from anyone?
No.
Good work. Move on, do business. Consider approval of bid from MEI Demolition and Excavation Incorporated for the demolition of the former Radio Shack building.
I can jump in on this one.
Sure.
This is part of the Perkyon Avenue Streetscape Project. The bid was put out through the Penn Bed Program. We had a number of local bidders, various bidders. The low bid is MEI Demolition and Excavation Incorporated. They're based out of Port Carbon, Pennsylvania. The low bid number was $24,499, all-inclusive. They have all their documents in order. They were approved and checked by the engineer on the project. And it's their recommendation at this time to award this bid. And they will be starting demolition work probably early winter here in the township and taking that building down as part of the whole project. Once the building is removed, the driveway area currently right next to the building will be shifted over to where the building is and that'll be part of the realignment as part of the whole landscape project. So it's my recommendation that the board award this contract. We will be getting reimbursed on this expense. The township pays the money. We then submit the request in and get reimbursed from the grant payment, or excuse me, from the grant payment, not the bond payment.
What's the turn time for this, Jeff, once they start?
This is gonna go relatively quick. It should be down in a couple of days and then cleaned up. The only outstanding thing at the end of it will be stabilization of the site. Depending on the weather, they'll obviously grate it all off and probably have to put down straw and stuff to stabilize it. It'll be beyond the typical growing season, so they will come back in the spring and have to reseed it and make sure that it's all green and growing before they'll get their final payment.
So there'll be no additional cost then as well? So it's the $24,499 we're reimbursed and there's no additional cost?
There's no additional cost projected now. The cost of coming back and greening it up and everything, that's part of their original contract.
Okay. Jeff, this is just a radio segment. This isn't the marquee, where all the signs are of the stores? That's not part of this project, correct?
That's not part of the project, no. The marquee is still there. We may be reusing it for the Promenade Center somewhere down the road.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
I'll make a motion that we accept the MEI demolition bid for the demolition of the former Radio Shack building at 3923 Perkyon Avenue.
At the cost of $24,499?
At the cost of $24,499.
I'll second.
Any further discussion or questions?
Matt, I just want to make sure that you said that it will be coming out of the money.
Jeff said it would be coming out reimbursed by the grant money.
Yeah, we're gonna, we actually will pay the bill to the contractor and we will submit to the grant program to get reimbursed that money. This whole grant is a reimbursable grant. We put in, we actually pay the money and they reimburse it right back to us. This will be a one-time, single payment. The other projects, as they go along, will be much larger in dollars, but they'll be broken up in payments. They'll be submitting payments all along and we'll be submitting requests for reimbursement at the same time.
Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Thanks, Jeff. Item number two under New Business. Discuss and consider awarding the contract for the Daniel Boone Homestead Master Plan. Laurie, were you gonna?
Sure, yeah. So like I said, I know I touched on it a little bit earlier in the beginning of the meeting with the public comment, but we did put the RFP out for this, to hire a company to do the work for the master plan. This would be to create the master plan for the site. We've been working on this in coordination with the Pennsylvania Historical Museum Commission, so PHMC. They're the ones that own the Daniel Boone Homestead, so we've been working very closely with them on this project. But the township does hold the grant, so that's why it's up to the board to select the company to do the work. We did get two submissions. We had a lot of interest, but we did only get two proposals, all of which were, both of which were shared with the board for review. One was from the Brandywine Conservancy. The other one was from Simone Collins. So staff, myself, Will, and Jeff sat down and reviewed the proposals and we also shared the proposals with PHMC so that they could present feedback to us as well because it is, they do own the property. And their choice was, their preference was Simone Collins based on the proposals submitted. And staff in reviewing the proposals, we also concurred with that conclusion. Simone Collins did. The proposals were, they were both very good and cost-wise, they're very similar. They're within $3,600. So there's not a big difference in cost on either proposal. But the work that Simone Collins presented in the proposal just edged out Brandywine Conservancy a bit, as far as we were concerned in reviewing. But looking for feedback from the board and see if, that's our recommendation, but open to feedback and discussion from you guys.
Thanks, Laurie. I got first a question for either Liz or Jeff. I mean, with RFP, could you just clarify with the bids requirements to take low bid or select any bid?
Do you want me to handle that, Jeff? If it's professional services like this, you're not, you don't have to take the lowest bid. You should take the bid that you feel is most qualified based on the recommendations from, you know, township personnel that reviewed and also any other outside recommendations that you received and also your review of the documents that were submitted. So you don't have to, when it's a professional service, you don't have to take the lowest bid.
Great, thank you.
Laurie, can you explain, I mean, you're talking $3,600. What separates them that would, I guess, save for us to spend the extra $3,600?
So from the proposals that they put together and PHMC and their feedback had kind of, had identified that a lot of the work that Brandywine Conservancy included in their proposals seemed to be on properties that they personally own. Simone Collins has a lot more experience based on the proposals. They demonstrated a lot more experience with conducting master plans. They're also familiar with the property. So as far as I'm concerned, the proposal just, it just kind of edged Brandywine out a bit. They gave a lot more specific examples of master plans that they've conducted. And frankly, because PHMC owns the property and ultimately any master plan that we have conducted with this grant would impact their property and give them the ability to go seek grants. We did defer a bit to their judgment as well, so we really took that into consideration because we are partnering with them on this.
Two follow-ups. Is there a, I know we ran into a time constraint, I believe, with the filing for the grant at one time. Is there a time constraint with this decision? And two, do we have the ability to go back and counter and say to match the other price? And I'm not sure of the process. And I'm not, I'm not sure of the process.
The grant I know was awarded in twenty nineteen and Jen, you might be able to, I don't know if you'll know off the top of your head, but I think we are running a bit with COVID, having delayed this process pretty significantly. We are kind of in a little, I wouldn't say a time crunch, but we do need to spend the money. There's also a question on, I don't really want to leave too much grant funding out there on the table that could potentially go away, that we've already been awarded, that has been mentioned as a potential. So I would say it would be in our best interest to move quickly on this to make sure that we get the money. We do already have twenty-five thousand of the fifty that we've been holding on to because they wanted to make an initial payment. I think we have about another year to spend it.
That sounds about right. I don't have my paperwork with me to know the actual deadline. But as Laurie said, this is a fifty thousand dollar grant and it works slightly differently than most of the other grants in that you were allowed to take an initial draw on the grant, basically. Usually it's reimbursement where you pay the invoice, you submit it, they reimburse you. This one, there was a draw proponent to it, so we do have the twenty-five thousand dollars. It had to sit in a separate account, in a separate interest-bearing account, which it is. As Laurie had said, she and I have both been on a couple different webinars recently where they are stating, you know, the one I watched was a PSAT webinar, which was actually run by D C E D, where they're stating that don't, grant funding may not continually be there. And so that's where Laurie's saying we should probably not let it sit on the table too long because the state could actually draw it backwards. So we should probably keep moving and and get that money drawn down sooner rather than later.
Okay.
And I, Jeff, I don't, I don't know the answer to whether or not we can negotiate a price that was submitted in an RFP. I don't know if Liz or Jeff.
You can, you can do that. This isn't treated, when when you're dealing with a professional service, it's not treated as a bid. So you can go out to the provider and negotiate. You can do that with a professional service contract.
So, Joe, it sounded like your preference was to to try to negotiate one down to the other?
Yeah, I I know that when we did the, for, when Jamie was doing it for the for the bonds, it was a little bit different because there are also some services that are provided that aren't, that weren't included in the RFP for for the price and the history. So I'm I'm just asking if you can. I mean, if you're sitting there saying that that is the, there's a significant difference between the two. I mean, I don't have a huge issue with it, but it'd be, it'd be nice to see if you could, if it could be matched. That's all I'm saying. Life is negotiations.
Anyone else?
Yes, I would like to to say that I'm looking through the master plan for Daniel Boone Homestead and it looks like Simone Collins also is talking about they're doing a trail gateway master planning for the comprehensive park recreation open space plan for the whole of Exeter Township, which covers is evaluating over nineteen hundred seventeen acres. I'm a little concerned. I think, I think that that Daniel Boone Homestead is an excellent place to have horse riding. I think it's wonderful to have trails and I think it's wonderful to have bikes down there going. But I'm just concerned about, there's all these plans and we have such much going on. If this isn't a time to just take stock, you're gonna need a lot of money to put that into Daniel Boone. You have a lot of coals and a fire on other parks. And who knows what's gonna happen as far as grants? But, you know, how far can we stretch everything? And how many more people are we gonna have to hire and keep on board to take care of these? I think we really need to sit back, decide, talk to the to the residents and decide what they want the most as far as recreation. I think the opportunity is definitely down at Daniel Boone because they have most land. And go from there instead of just, well, there's a grant, let's go for it and build or do something. Let's, let's think out which which is the best thing for the residents and what they want.
Well, Michelle, if I could just clarify a bit, and I agree with you. It's, we should absolutely plan ahead rather than just jumping into projects totally agree. This is, this is just to conduct the master plan. So this process, we already have the Parks and Rec, the comprehensive master plan for all of our properties. This isn't for construction. This isn't marrying us to any plans for development. This is just simply to create a master plan for the property so that we can use that to seek grant funding in the future to do projects and also would allow PHMC to seek grant funding as well so that we could do future projects together. And the goal is passive recreation. We're not talking building playgrounds, putting in sports fields, anything like that. But this will just give us the document that will be, that will serve as a guide for future projects. This is not to construct anything right now.
Well, it's a hundred thousand dollars that, just to get a guide, which will probably change as I've set behind this board for years and involved with the county. And you spend all the money and you don't have the money to do it or things change. I'm just, I'm just suggesting that we need to put a little, hold on, look what we're doing overall and really talk to the residents and see what they want most. Not what, not what some architect thinks that we need. That's all. I said, let, think about it. I don't think right now is a perfect time to jump ahead into this when all the other projects we have on. And I agree, it's a perfect place to to put all, you have enough room down there to do anything you want. But I'm sure the residents will love everything, but, you know, how many other things are you thinking about? I know at one of our last meetings, we were talking about doing this here and not here. And and the people want recreation, I understand that, but let's be, let's really think about it. Instead of just because there's a grant grabbing it and running. That's my opinion. But like I said, I saw many, many studies pass through this building and a lot of money wasted.
Michelle, Greg or John?
Yeah, I, 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 my opinion's a little different from Michelle's. I think when you have an opportunity to get grant money, you're, whatever you're gonna end up doing, you're basically doing it for half the cost. And we want to take advantage of that. In particular, I think post-COVID, you're gonna see grants very difficult to get. And so while we have one, I think we should take that opportunity. As far as, I just have a question. With this contract, where would that, would we be paying that? Or is that grant money or how does that work?
We have a fifty thousand dollar grant, so we will put up the other, it's a fifty-fifty match. So the proposal came in at like ninety-nine thousand, so fifty percent of that we pay and that's budgeted for in the park fund. The other fifty is covered by the grant.
Okay. So you're talking ninety-nine thousand dollars and the difference is three thousand six hundred?
Correct.
Okay.
So three and a half percent. John?
Yeah, I actually reviewed both the Daniel Boone Homestead proposals from Simone Collins and Brandywine Conservancy proposal. I actually agree with the administration that it seemed like Simone Collins is more qualified. Nothing against the Brandywine one, but it just seems like this is not their forte or their niche. So I would, and I agree with Greg, you know, grant money's gonna be probably dried up as the post-COVID era begins. So any chance we could get, we should take it. And Daniel Boone Homestead is, you know, probably that and the Country Club are probably the two nicest properties in the township. So putting some money towards the Daniel Boone is a great idea and I think it's a positive for the township, positive for the community. So I think we should award it to Simone Collins. After, Dave, if you have anything to say, I'll, I'll make that motion.
Yeah, and I do, what I would say too is just building on what Greg said about when grants are available, you don't turn them down, but the other thing is when land's available, you don't turn it down. And, you know, there, there's certainly indications that something's gonna happen with this land. If we don't do something, it could wind up in someone's hand and wind up another development or something else. So the land is always available, you know, at at the time, it might not be there in the future. So if that's grant money, I think it's the land.
It's a hidden gem. I think it's a beautiful property.
Yeah.
So in essence, actually, it would be, so it's actually be eighteen hundred dollars, Laurie? Is that what we'd be, the difference because we're splitting?
Yep.
Okay. And I I can support it. I'm just, I'm asking again, too. It's one of those things that maybe it's just my background. If if you can get the bid lower, benefits time sensitive and it's an eighteen hundred dollar difference and you have a a superior product.
I'm, I'm happy to have the conversation with them to see if they'll match the other proposal.
Yeah, there's no harm in that, Joe. I agree with you.
No, that's what I'm saying. I would at least go back and say this was the other bid.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if we can structure the, the motion to, to meet the thirty-six hundred less and then amend it. I'm not sure how I could bid.
Yeah, I think we, if you want to do the motion that way, contingent upon, approval contingent upon their meeting the, or matching the other number.
Yeah, and if they say no, we can always come back and readdress it. Would that be right?
Yeah. Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. You can do that.
All right, so Laurie, what's the other, what's the other number?
The other number is ninety-six thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we award the contract for the Daniel Boone Master Plan to Simone Collins in the amount of ninety-six thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars.
I'll second that.
That was you, John?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So four-one, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the work.
Item number three under new business, adopt ordinance authorizing execution of service electric cable franchise agreement. I think Jeff, you discussed this in deep hell last time, you and Laurie and everything else. I think this is just the official action.
That's correct. We do need to take official board action on this. We went through all the details of it. This is actually just the whereas and therefore's as part of an ordinance. It's my recommendation that we approve this. We won't, it won't be too far down the road till we'll be looking at the next cable franchise agreement for, for Comcast, so.
Thanks, Jeff.
I believe that we adopt the ordinance authorizing execution of the service electric cable franchise agreement.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I just have it. Thanks, everyone. New business item number four, consider awarding twenty-twenty-one township mowing contract.
The mowing contract, we had four requests for the mowing contract. However, we only got one contract come back. That was from Sodasani Lawn Care for eighty thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars.
That was eighty thousand, one hundred and twelve, Clarence?
That's correct.
What was it? They had it last year? What was their contract cost?
Um, it was in the sixties. I'm not, I can't, I won't, I can't tell you exactly.
Okay.
I know it was in the sixties something, but we've added a lot of stuff since then.
Okay.
The initial contract.
And how many bids came last year, Clarence?
You mean the the last contract?
Yeah.
I think there were, I think there was three altogether.
What is the length of the contract?
This will be for three years with the, with an extra year if both parties agree.
With your option. And the, the rate that they're proposing, this is staying the same throughout the three-year contract.
Right. And this is assuming that it's a, it's another year where they mow all year long. Like this year, again, we had a, it it just, grass never really stopped. I think maybe for about a week or so, we had a little bit of a dry spell there, a week or two, but other than that, it just kept going. So, you know, you you get a dry summer, it'll be better. If it's a wetter summer, it'll be a little bit better. This is according to twenty-six mowings at the most.
So Clarence, if it would be, say, twenty-three mowings, then that number is lower?
It's gonna come, yes.
Okay, gotcha. So it's just not a flat number regardless of how many times?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, this is the same firm that has been here for a while, correct?
Yes. He's been doing a good job for us. No little issues, no.
They did do.
He forgets, you know, we have so many little areas that we have all over the place. I mean, little pieces of sidewalk with a little piece of grass and they, they take care of it along in these developments. They do a very good job on it.
Yeah, Clarence, this would probably be an intact, impossible task for one person. And when you think the the price here of, you know, with benefits of having one person in-house, I doubt they.
Oh, yeah, you couldn't do it. Who would need, we would have to buy at least two zero turns. You'd have to have probably a minimum of two guys doing this all. Because he was like three guys doing this for most of the week.
Yeah.
I mean, he knows it himself.
I'll make a motion to award the two thousand twenty-one township mow, mowing contract to Sodasani Lawn Care in the amount of eighty thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars.
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I just have it. Thanks, Clarence.
Thank you.
Appointment of positions. Jeff, I think you're gonna explain this one?
Yes, we have, we have two positions that we're looking to fill this evening. A few months back, our Assistant Public Works Superintendent resigned his position to move on to another location. That was an internal opening that we had here. One of our staff members, Larry Piercel, had been working as the fleet manager through Public Works. He was interested internally. We interviewed him and felt that his skill set and the work and experience that he had had in the township was what we were looking for internally. I know Larry gets along very well with the, with the crew, works well with Clarence. And as a relatively long-term employee, he knows the township very well in terms of getting around the township, knowing where things are. He's, he's a local gentleman here, so he's always available for call-outs and things of that nature. We felt that it would be a good move to move him into this position. The fleet manager position is not going to be replaced. Larry will be covering some of the duties associated with that. He cleaned up that that area, got a good handle on issues we had with the fleet and he's gonna be able to continue monitoring those things as well as assisting Mr. Hamm with running the department. So we felt that we're going to put him in this position. He's actually been performing the duties on, as the acting role since September fifteenth. Like the request that the board formally appoint him as Assistant Public Works Superintendent.
Make a motion to appoint Larry Piercel as Assistant Public Works Superintendent.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, Dave, one, assuming when the votes are done, congratulations and thank you to Larry, but also too for administration to work, basically combine a position. for administration to work, basically combine a position. Not only is Larry's very loyal, I know just the time I've been around him, he's he's done an excellent job, but to be able to take two positions and and combine them into one. Just it's greatly appreciated. So thank you very much. And congrats in a moment, I believe, Larry.
Great. And I guess just just thinking about what you had said, Jeff, he assumed this position September fifteenth. Does the motion need to include pay since September fifteenth as opposed to going forward?
I think it would be appropriate to to do a retro to September fifteenth. His scheduled annual salary is seventy two thousand. Considering that we're saving the salary and benefits of the other position, I think this is a very good deal for the township. And we know Larry's going to continue working hard and and keeping things moving ahead.
Great, thanks. I mean, Greg, you'd need to
He has jumped. He has jumped in ever since Mike has left, so he's he's been actually doing this for a long time, but
Yeah. Excellent. Thanks, Clarence. Just wanted to check that the motion need to have amended to add that.
It was John's motion.
Do I? Yeah. Do we have to amend it?
You should amend it. Yep.
Okay, I'll amend my motion to name Larry Piercelle as Assistant Public Works Superintendent and retro pay back pay to September fifteenth, twenty twenty.
And then I will second that again.
Thanks, everyone. Any further questions?
Yes, please. State the pay for the records. Liz is here.
Yeah, you should state the pay. I think Jeff did state that, but it doesn't necessarily have to be in the motion, just as long as it's reflected in the minutes. I've reported it. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Congratulations, Larry.
Ayes have it. Congrats, Larry.
Congrats.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Jeff, Code Enforcement Officer.
This this position, Code Enforcement Officer, we have one gentleman who has been in this position as the Assistant Code Enforcement Officer. There is no Code Enforcement Officer, so he's an assistant reporting to no one. In reality, he reports to the zoning officer, who is the director of our department, Mr. Bruger. So it really made sense to to kind of clean things up, give him this title that he is the Code Enforcement Officer. When he goes out on a case or goes to the magistrate's office, it makes sense since he is the one who is in charge of of Code Enforcement in the township. There really will be, other than the title change, and maybe some business card changes, there really will be no no difference. There is no increase in the salary. It's just a matter of changing the title to reflect that he is actually the top person doing that work, and he's not the assistant reporting to no one. So Mr. Hunter, Jason Hunter, is currently in that position. And if the board could formally appoint him to to the Code Enforcement Director.
Thanks, Jeff. I'll make a motion to appoint Jason Hunter as the Code Enforcement Officer slash Director.
I'll second.
That was Michelle?
Yes.
Very good. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just want to add, Dave, that I just want to commend the work of Jason. You know, him and I worked on some things last year and a lot of feedback I get from residents is he's just a great very communicates great, very professional. So I just want to let everybody know in the public that he represents the township in his position that he's been in and now that he has the official title towards it. He's very professional. And I I've gotten nothing but good emails from township residents concerning Jason's work. So I'm really happy that this happened, and I think he's a top notch professional person.
Great, thanks, gentlemen. Fully agree with you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Department Report. Joe?
I really don't have too much to report tonight, just that H and K Group is planning on starting the Butter Lane Culvert this week, weather depending. They did arrive on site and start marking areas for construction. I'll be meeting with them this tomorrow afternoon just to go over some questions. So hopefully that project will start. And if it doesn't completely start this week, it definitely will start the following week due to weather conditions that are forecasted for this week. That's all I have for this evening. If anybody has any questions.
Thanks, Jeff.
My thank you.
Clarence, any leads to talk about?
All five lose, we're out. The lead four is turned home. So, yeah, it's I'm sure a lot of people were happy to see them out there. They were out all day today in the rain and they like I said, all machines went and they all had about two full loads apiece. So it's it's pretty good. They'll be out the rest of this week gone and with five machines going, we can keep up pretty well. We won't have, you know, any complaints like years ago, we only had a few machines. So it was pretty hard to keep up with it, but now we're in pretty good. So the the other thing I would report on is up at the Promenade, the Holiday here has moved out. They're finished completely cleaned up. Motofoto will be out this week. The Pizza Riviera, they are out. And China China Penn will be out by the end of the month. He said he might have some pieces of equipment that he still has to move, which is no problem. So other than that, everything is moving along okay up there. So that's about it.
Very good. Thanks, Clarence. Chief?
Not much. We had a truck detail and motor carrier safety inspection detail last Thursday. Traffic off parking behind the township building there. Eight agencies assisted us in the detail. We had forty nine trucks that were inspected. Six trucks out of service, two drivers replaced out of service, and sixty one citations were issued with fines in excess of five thousand dollars. So out there. And every one of those details is essential in the roadway safe. And in addition, we had a mix up inspection that resulted in in a possession of marijuana charges to someone operating the C D in possession. So it was a it was a good detail.
Thanks, Steve. And Liz?
I don't have anything for you guys unless you have any questions.
Right now. Thanks. Jeff?
Two things. I have one item. I'm not sure if it if there's any public comment on it, non agenda item. It's involving Halloween trick or treating. Several residents have contacted board members and myself suggesting that we cancel Halloween. Well, Halloween is a holiday. We don't have any say over that, but the the whole issue of of trick or treating. The board, in in, we discussed this previously at a meeting, the board did not say they were endorsing trick or treating per se or anything. All the board did was take the action, was to pick a day and the timing of it. And that was simply to try and prevent people from going out trick or treating on multiple days and long periods of time. They were just kind of setting some guidelines there. Trick or treating is is obviously a personal choice by parents and their children to decide if they want to go out trick or treating or not. And unfortunately, even if I think the township made the regulation that said no trick or treating, it would be almost unenforceable. And I think a lot of people would still go out and try and trick or treat. It is suggested that, you know, if you don't want anyone to come to your home, to leave your front porch lights off and, you know, just kind of just stay in your house. If you do go out obviously with your children, on go to well lit homes that appear to be welcoming. Practice good safety, health guidelines. And the Center for Disease Control has a lot of information for alternate events and activities out there to do and some precautions to take if you are trick or treating. So that information is out there. And we just wanted to make sure everyone knows that the board is not encouraging people to go out. We simply set a date and a time to try and lend some continuity to people going out there. Speaking of Halloween, I do want to just talk about one item here. This past Saturday evening, we held our drive through Halloween event here at the Township Building. To try and do something with the the children in the township, what we felt was a safe, fun activity, we did a drive through event here. Residents were able to pre-register for various time slots. They came through with their cars. They were greeted by various people in costumes. The the place was decorated up great. A lot of thanks goes out to our Public Works crew for helping doing that and also some of our local community vendors who helped with monetary donations, candy donations, and setting up decorations. We ran the cars through the Public Works garage that was all set up. At the end, the the residents were able to collect a goodie bag and some pumpkins to take home and do some activities with their children. The police department was there, meeting and greeting the children as well as our fire department. Overall, I think we had close to, I believe Laurie can correct me on this. I think we had over four hundred goodie bags that we gave out to the carloads of kids. And and the last thing I just really want to talk about is Laurie Getz did a fantastic job of putting this event together. She was working around the clock. I know she was here long hours on on Friday, all day Saturday, putting this together. And I want to congratulate her for her hard work. And I also want to thank the rest of the staff that were here. We had a lot of staff that showed up for the event. No one was getting overtime. Nobody got paid anything extra. They came here and volunteered their time. And it really was a great event, and I just want to compliment the staff. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Public comments, non agenda items.
Yes, we have two. The first one is from Mr. Hoover. Glenn Hoover. Sorry, I always call him Mr. Hoover.
Good morning. This is Glenn Hoover calling. I have a general comment I'd like to make. It's in regards to our Travelers insurance claim dated May the twenty eighth, two thousand and nineteen. I would like to hear, get information as to where we stand on that and what progress has been made since our last conversation. Along with, I'd like to emphasize, I hope the same interest in in collecting that amount of money, which is a sufficient amount of money, in my opinion, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I see you're trying to collect the back money for the sewer that's outstanding. So I think the emphasis should be placed on that just as strongly. Also, I'd like to comment on of keep in mind that I attended their meetings there for almost twenty consecutive years. I miss coming to the regular meetings, but I can live with what we have for now because of the six. But to keep in mind in the future that you make a meeting room, even if you have removable walls, that you can accommodate a large amount of people. I mean, it's just ridiculous. We want people to participate in you, and you're sure I would think you would appreciate people being there and stating their their comments or recommendations, or even sometimes the pleasure for the service we get. The room should be adequate. Thank you. Hope to hear from you soon. Have a good day and thank you.
Thanks. Well, I guess two things there. I mean, I certainly fully agree with, you know, Mr. Hoover on the meeting room. We need facilities and good audio visual equipment and everything to conduct these meetings, especially going forward. As far as the insurance claims, I mean, Liz, I don't know if you have full handover there. I know Fox had been handling them before. We had some at the wastewater treatment plan and some at R C C. And what Mr. Hoover's talking about, I don't know if, you know, we could look at an update on any of those in the near future.
Dave, I have an update.
Okay.
Fox is still handling this. We had actually thought a month or two ago, actually in the spring, we had thought that this was going to be settled. We thought we were in the final stages of it. And unfortunately, it kind of reared its head again a couple of months ago. So I did reach out to Fox today and got an update to give to Mr. Hoover and to the public. So we, I believe it was September seventeenth, there was some emails going around that the Travelers Claim Adjuster had asked for some additional information. So back in, I believe, February or March, they had reached out and they had been in discussions with Fox and they had asked for some information. We had given it to them. Fox had taken their conversation with Travelers as they thought that was the end and that there would be some sort of payment coming. It went silent for a while and then in September, they reached out again, asked for some more information and stated that it was still an open claim. I did, like I said, reached out to Fox today. They said they just actually heard, I think, three days ago, he said, so late last week from an attorney that Travelers has has gotten on board with this claim. So there's now an attorney involved. An attorney firm out of Philadelphia involved in the claim, and they sent Fox some additional request lists. Fox is working on it. They said they may need something from the township. They'd be in contact with us in a day or two if there's any information they need from the township, and that they were hoping to get the information back to the Travelers attorney by the end of this week. So it is still, they work at orders. And this has to do with the defe- the defeasance, and I'm sorry, the the switch from of the Reading Country Club debt service bonds from tax free to taxable. So this is the bond claim. This is not an insurance claim. This is a bond claim for the public officials bond back in two thousand six or two thousand seven with the misappropriation of the funds of the funds from the the bonds being utilized for non bond related items. So that's what this has to do with. So we were seeking the the costs back for the switching of that bond from a tax free bond to a taxable bond. It's approximately seven hundred thousand dollars, I believe.
Okay. Thanks, Jen. Any questions from anyone else? All right, move on, Larry.
Okay, next comment is from David Hughes.
Yes, this is David Hughes for non agenda items comments. I live on Forty Seventh Street. Recently, this past week, apparently there was a car show held at Promenade. Who knew about this? It wasn't. It wasn't talked about in the meetings. It wasn't reported by the township manager. But more immediately, my questions are, who sponsored it? Did they profit from it? Was it a profitable operation? Did we charge for the use of the Promenade? Was there liability insurance? Did they? Did they take out a permit? Okay, was there a deposit so that if any damage was incurred by the current businesses up there or even on our building that you're going to eventually tear down? And also for cleanup afterward, if it wasn't cleaned up, was there a deposit held on this event? This is township business. And unlike our other venues like the Reading Country Club, our parks in our area, where they know about these things, this was a special event on township property. So I don't know if you can honestly answer these questions or if you're just going to pass it by, but I'd like to know what's going on where we're leasing out this property for events. Thank you.
All right. Jeff, know anything about leasing out the property from this?
Yes, I can respond to this. We did not lease out or rent out the property to anyone. This type of event, these pop up events happen in various locations. It happened to be that they showed up there at an empty parking lot and had, I believe, what is being described as an impromptu car show. I know these activities had taken place at Sonic Drive-In and down at the Walmart. Um, I know these activities had taken place at, um, Sonic Drive-In and down at the Walmart parking lot. Um, these are unsanctioned activities where a bunch of people get, go on social media and, and say, hey, let's all meet somewhere and show off our cars or, uh, play some music, whatever. Um, this was not sanctioned by the township. They were there on, on their own. Um, we did not know about it. Nobody approached us or told us about it. And unfortunately, these events sometimes come and go quickly, um, and, uh, unless someone notifies our police that there's something going on or questioned it, um, they might not even know that, that the event was happening. As long as it, it wasn't making a lot of noise or, uh, commotion, it might not even be noticed by, by anyone. Um, that parking lot is a little bit removed from the mainstream where it sits back there. So we did not condone this or put it on. So there was no contract. There was no money or insurance or anything. This was, no one asked us or contacted us to try and have an event like this. Um, in the very near future, a big majority of that parking lot area will be fenced off as part of the demolition of the, of the main building. Um, so that will eliminate, uh, a, a big portion of the area that could be used for anything. Um, once the demolition is done, uh, it will be even more, uh, curtailed, the area total. Um, so people won't be able to drive up through the whole parking lot. They'll be able to enter in and go to the, uh, dry cleaners and Monroe, uh, at the one end and at the other end, they'd be able to go to the office building. But other than that, they won't be able to utilize the entire parking lot. So very shortly that, that issue will be removed, but we did not, um, condone this or put this event on.
Thanks Jeff. Got takes care of that. Supervisor reports. Uh, John?
Just want to congratulate the two sergeants again, Sergeant Davis and Sergeant Camilla and Larry and Jason. And, um, want to congratulate, to echo Jeff's comments, you know, great job by the staff and the police, fire, fire police, everybody that was involved with the Halloween drive-through, you know, good, everything I've read about it and people told me it was really fun and exciting. So, uh, one of the things that, that, you know, you guys always do well is the community events, you know, the Fall Festival and other events we've done in the past. The, uh, staff does a great job reaching out to the community and that includes the staff, the police, the fire and the fire police. So top-notch, um, event as usual and the great professionalism by all the different aspects of the, of the township. So, v- very proud and, um, keep up the good work.
Thanks, John. Very good. Uh, Michelle?
Um, the only thing that I'm gonna remind, uh, residents that if they do want to use something within the township, they have to bring it before the board. Uh, no single supervisor can make a decision on their own. So, um, you have to let somebody in the building know if you want, uh, use to use something and then, um, it can, workers here can help take care of getting it done if they're able to. That's it.
Thanks, Michelle. Joe?
Yeah, um, Laurie, Jeff, Jen, administration, uh, the police, the fire, everyone, again, thank you for the trick-or-treats. Uh, Laurie, please make sure those pictures get posted on the website. They're awesome. Uh, they can be used against you, by the way. No, excellent job. And the other thing is too, I know that we, we had discussed, um, some bond refinancing. I had a, a resident ask me, come up to me and said, why are we, why did we spend two million dollars to refinance a bond? And I'm like, huh? And I explained to them, I said, no, no, no. I said, just one of the options that we would, we were considering that, you know, there's parameters. They put resolutions out with parameters of what certain things we would need to meet. But just so everyone understands that that's not, we would not be spending that kind of money, that that would just be used basically as a principal curtailment that would reduce our debt. So, uh, if, if one person had asked that, I figured maybe other people, that's all. So I just wanted to, again, let everyone know that we, in fact, are not spending that kind of money, uh, to refinance a debt. That's it.
Thanks, Joe. Greg?
Yeah, I want to thank everyone with the, the trick-or-treat and congratulate the officers, Larry and our Code Enforcement Officer all on their, uh, positions. Also, I want to mention Joe and I played it or, uh, participated in the police golf outing at the beat the supervisor holes and the police did an outstanding job organizing the event. It was, it's, it was tremendous what they had to offer and they, they just did a great job. There were a lot of golfers from Exeter there and it was really a, a, a positive day. So I really want to commend them for their efforts and very well organized.
Thanks Greg. Another one of the bigger events that we've had there in the last few years, huh?
That's the biggest I can remember. I, I mean, they, they sold the course out and had twenty groups on a waiting list. I mean, had people, they had golfers from as far as West Virginia, they said. But still, they just did a fantastic job promoting and then organizing.
Excellent, thanks. And for myself, I just want to certainly congratulate Sergeant DeCamila and Sergeant Davis, you know, on, on their promotions and also, uh, Larry and Jason on theirs as well. And thanks to Laurie, you know, and the entire staff for, you know, what seemed to be, what, what was a, a great event for, you know, putting out there for the kids that can't have a normal Halloween this year. Went over really well, so really appreciate everyone putting in the extra effort. That's all I have. That make a motion to. Thanks, John.
I'll second.
Greg, you second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Liz? I just have it.
I have a great Halloween, everybody. Good night, everyone.
Go on.
Good night.
Good night.